I called the December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen Finance Committee meeting to order at six forty-five P. M. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and seventy-two, seventy-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighty-five cents, manual checks to the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents, payroll liabilities for twelve, seven, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and one thousand, nine, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, for a total of eight hundred and nine, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second. Been moved and seconded in any discussion? Any questions or anything on the bills?
Nope, I didn't have anything tonight.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye vote aye, motion passes, any other business?
No, Your Honor.
I have none, Your Honor.
All right, we're adjourned at six forty-six.
December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting of the Riverdun City Council to order at seven P. M., and Councilmember Schatz will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Hancock will give us an indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to meet together as a city council tonight and to discuss the business of the city. We thank thee for the opportunity to serve and for those who have chosen to become involved in the work of the city, and we ask that it please bless all of those who work for the city, who volunteer, and are just involved in making this city a better place, that they can be blessed with greater intelligence and ability, and that they can be blessed with greater strength and guidance from thee. We ask that it please help protect us and guide us tonight, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, and the city clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Godey.
Present.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I'm present and declare that we have a quorum this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight with a slightly different hat than I used to wear in this room all the time. I'm here on behalf of the Ducks Unlimited organization, which is the largest conservation organization in the world, and we take a continental approach to wildlife and conservation. South America, Mexico, U. S., Canada, Alaska, we work in all of those areas, and it's a little bit of a misnomer to call it Ducks Unlimited, because ducks do benefit, but there's nine hundred other species that have been documented that benefit from the work that we do, including humans, because when you build wetlands and we capture water, we help with flood control, and we help for water purification, because the water that ends up in a lot of these ponds, and especially like in the Okalala Aquifer and stuff like that, that water infiltrates, and then is, we're able to get that water out for the citizens downstream from there. So it's really a continental approach. We have projects in Mexico where the ducks winter all the time, we have water and food plots down there, build the same types of things here in the U. S. in the Lower Forty-eight, and if you have a chance next spring, drive out to Midvale Store, go down Missouri Valley Road to the northwest corner of Ocean Lake, and you'll see one of the latest projects in Wyoming. Ducks spent a half million dollars in closing some ponds to pump water into, and they will gradually step down, and the water will return back to Ocean Lake again. So we're using the water and doing it, and they plant native grass and food species in there for the ducks to eat as they're traveling north, because they cannot make the entire flight from Mexico all the way to their breeding grounds. They have to have a stopover to get additional food to survive. So that's some of what we build in the U. S. Once they get to Canada, we've built wetlands and projects like that, and nesting habitat, because they're further to nest and raise their young. Then in the fall, it's in reverse. It stops over in the U. S., feeding, you know, you've seen ducks and geese everywhere in the fall, cornfields, grain fields that have been picked, they bulk up again in order to make the regular trip the rest of the way south. Fish and Wildlife has banded ducks, and the little teal that weighs about a pound has been documented to make a ten-thousand-mile flight each direction every year. That's amazing when you think about that little bird. So anyway, ducks this year was a two-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar business, and the goal of Ducks Unlimited is to use, from an efficiency standpoint, have at least eighty percent of that money spent on the ground. Seventeen percent is spent getting materials that will come to events like ours to auction, make money, and turn it in, and there's only three percent goes into administration. In all of the five-oh-one C. threes in the country, there are sixteen thousand of them, Ducks is in the top one-hundred with one of the best efficiencies that there is. So what they earn, they put it on the ground. That's very important to all of us. In Wyoming, I told you about this particular project, but in Wyoming, we have three-hundred-and-twenty-four volunteers, forty-three-hundred-and-ninety-four members, and major donors, and major gifts, and last year, we earned four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars at roughly twenty events in the state. Now that's small compared to places like Arkansas, you know, where they got thousands of volunteers, many more events, they make a lot more money, but most people don't really believe that Wyoming's got a whole lot of waterfall, but we do, and we have an active group of people that is proposing these kinds of things and doing it. And I'd like to enter, and one other thing, that money, even the four-hundred thousand that I just mentioned, when we partner with Game and Fish, Federal Fish and Wildlife, and other agencies, and a lot of private owners, they leverage that money four to five times. So the two-hundred-and-twenty million that Ducks earned last year, they could leverage up to a billion dollars. Now that's, that's real money for projects, and eighty percent of it goes in the ground. So I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl Coleman, area chair, right here, and she's brought some of her committee along tonight, and we have a request from the council.
Okay.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Council, for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. Howard spoke a lot about our continental mission, our vision for wetlands conservation, and the impact that it has on humans as a whole and on North America, but I want to take a moment and speak just a little bit about our town. And I work in the schools, I serve every building K. twelve in District Twenty-five, so everything from Aspen Early Learning Center on, up to our alternative high schools, and I see every day, I'm a behavior analyst, so I get to the fun job of helping with behavior, and I see, as I'm sure you do, the need for positive recreation and healthy skills for our youth, and positive opportunities for families to get out and have healthy recreational opportunities. So the request we have tonight is, you see our flag, we have several of these ordered and are hoping for the opportunity to hang them along Main Street and Federal during the week prior to our banquet, but the reason we're asking that is so that when you and any community member looks and sees those flags hanging on Main Street, in addition to thinking about the enormous impact of an organization like Ducks Unlimited, think about our town and what we're doing right here. Every child under the age of seventeen that comes to our banquet February sixteenth has the opportunity to participate in the Wyoming Junior Duck Stamp Contest, free of charge. It's a conservation education program, they get to compete for scholarships, they get a free membership, Greenwing membership, to Ducks Unlimited. The wetlands, especially the Ocean Lake wetland that we have right here, sixty acres, provides an opportunity for kids, science classes, to go out and have field trips, for rewards assemblies, things like that, and it's not just a duck hunters' organization. I mean, duck hunting is an opportunity for families to get together and have that positive recreational experience, but it's expensive, I mean, buying all those decoys and the calls and getting out there, and we recognize that. That's why we work to teach kids about bird watching, you know, and just getting out there and getting the skills of observing the other nine hundred species of wildlife that benefit from those wetlands, so. Any questions?
This will be the fortieth year that we're having an event in Riverdun.
So what you're asking is to fly these flags?
Yes, sir.
From the poles in Riverdun, like we do the U. S. flags on holidays and that type of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you want to do that a week before the, okay, and you guys are going to put them, I don't, guess I don't know that I have the, I don't know that I can say yes, without checking with staff.
Your Honor, I don't believe there's anything that would, we've talked about it previously, I don't think there's anything that would restrict that.
Okay.
Council would like to allow it.
Okay, all right. So moved. So moved.
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like it's okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
We'd also like to invite you all to our banquet, February sixteenth, one of the leading chapters in the state. Howard talked a little bit about efficiency, and we have actually increased our efficiency by twenty percent. We're at sixty-seven percent efficiency just within our chapter, so we're looking forward to, we doubled our net income from last year, two years ago, to last year's event, and we're hoping to do that again and have another record-breaking year this year, so we'd like to invite you to be part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ron Warpness, and Mayor Baker and Council, there's just a couple of issues that I'd like to fetch on that I think we're still involved in, but before we go down there, this is going to be your last meeting, is my understanding, and that's a pretty special time. I remember when I was with the city and we didn't have ducks to talk about, we had a lot of chickens. We'll forget all of the meetings that we had over if we're going to have chickens, and how many, and can they be roosters, and what, it was just, I also want to compliment you, Mayor Baker, on the wonderful job that you've done these last four years at maintaining the decorum in the council. I haven't had to see anyone being escorted out by the chief, I had that pleasure a couple of times, and there was a couple of times that I thought I was going to be wearing Arrow shirts, and so when we had the air group here, that was quite a time. So you've done just an outstanding job these last four years, Mayor Baker.
Thank you.
And I just want to compliment you on that. I also think Councilman Godey, who's going to be leaving, has done an outstanding job, and I hate to see you go, but I bet we get another good person in, so, anyway. Regarding the staff, I listened to most of the meetings diligently, and so even though I may not be in the audience here, I'm in the audience at home watching it. In fact, I record most of them so that I can go back and refer to various issues. It's terrible to be addicted to this kind of stuff, as I like it, but at any rate, we have a wonderful city and we've got good foundation, but the television that we have in place, it's being manned by Tim Hugus, and Tim is just an outstanding staff member that works behind the scenes and just does an outstanding job, and has put together something that was far better than I anticipated when I was pushing to get the council chambers televised, so you've carried that through, and I think that's great. The two issues that I wanted to reference this evening, the one was, is four-twenty-two Main Street, I know you're still working on that, and trying to come up with a figure of how we're going to transfer that, and et cetera, et cetera. As I recall, Councilman Schatz, at a recent meeting, made the comment that there are several pocket parks in town, and I think that is accurate. I would just have to ask, how many of them have handicapped restrooms in them? Eighty-eight? And how many of them are on Main Street? And I don't, I can't think of any that fit that definition, so even though we've got a lot of little pocket parks all over town, we're not meeting that need on our Main Street, and that was what my concern was. The other issue is the packing plant that's going to be, we're headed down that road. I'm very supportive of that, I think it's a wonderful idea. Economically, it should have happened ten years ago, so I just want you to know that, preferencing my statements here, that I'm very supportive of the packing plant, that whole idea, meeting that need in the community, and economically, I think it's just a great idea. I am, however, opposed to it at the planned location of St. St. and Airport Road for the following reasons. The additional truck traffic on Airport Road will add additional strain on an already dangerous and busy road. Many of you know I have a building up there, I'm upwind for the plant, so it's not going to bother me at all, one way or the other, that's not why I'm concerned about it, but whenever an issue like this is brought forward, my brain just thinks, how will this affect our entire community, and is it good for us in the long term? And so the first five years, we get a beautiful new building up there, think it'll be great. Ten, fifteen years down the road, and when you get double or triple or more the amount of cattle that are coming into that area, how is that going to play into our community? So supporters claim that there will be little smell, according to Bruce Westlake. He described it as, there won't be much. Well, much in my wife's lexicon is a completely different thing than in my lexicon. I, you know, the house can be burning down, and I probably won't smell it, and she gets a little bit of smoke, and it's, it's a catastrophe, so, anyway, that's an issue. The prevailing wind is from the northwest, blowing towards Riverdun, so it's blowing right towards Riverdun. The larger and older the plant grows over time, and more of a problem this little smell can become at this new location. This location is also very close to our beautiful new forty-million-dollar Job Corps campus that is just a little downwind from this planned location. We went to a lot of heartache to get that Job Corps in place, and I think we need to be doing everything we can to enhance the community around it, and I realize that if you're in this business, that you see this as an enhancement, and like I say, I'm very supportive of the business, just not at that location. Fifty cows per week is planned when the plant is in full operation, that's within five years, is my understanding. I had no idea what these facts were, but I Googled how much blood a cow has, and according to Google, it's got ten-point-three gallons of blood per cow. Well, at fifty cows, that's five-hundred-and-thirty gallons of blood every week that will be flowing from Airport through our sewer system, clear to the sewer treatment plant on the other side of town. And those of us that have been with the city know that we have sewer breaks all the time in town, the biosolids that will be going into our groundwater and whatnot, I just question if that's something that we need to be concerned about. And I went down and talked to Dan Bach, he's the individual that's in charge of the sewer treatment plant, and Dan is an outstanding individual, we're just so fortunate to have him there, but he didn't see it as a problem, he says, whatever they send down to us, we can process it, not a problem, and so that's, that's not the issue, but, let's see, I also think of the Airport Road as being one of our main entrances into Riverdun, and travelers and potential citizens into Riverdun would be met with a slaughter plan as a first impression. Is this well-thought-out plan? On the east side of town, that would not be the case. The city has land on the east side, down by the sewer treatment plant, that I think would be much more appropriate placement for it, but I'm sure you guys have looked at that, and there may be good reasons not to go there, I don't know, I'm just looking at one side of it. We need a more thorough public vetting of this issue before the council take a firm public position. Mr. Dave Case is up there, has upright construction, many of you probably know Dave, and he's done some work for me, and I stopped in his office, and I asked him, I said, Dave, what do you think about your new neighbors? And he says, what new neighbors? Didn't have any idea what I was even talking about, and that was on the twenty-ninth of November, and so I just think that we, I've talked to a lot of people around town, and they, they're like I am, they're very supportive of the operation, but they question if that's the appropriate setting for it. In talking with Kevin Kraschisnik, the only time pressure on this project is one that we're putting on ourselves, okay, and Kevin says, if this doesn't go at this time, or if you don't pass the resolution, and it's my understanding, that's already been passed, so that's a moot point, but, but if it doesn't happen, it will set it back three months or a quarter, the project, so I just think in the long-term well-being of our community that we might want to slow it down and take a better look at it, so. The reasons for the Airport location, as far as I can tell, the zoning is correct, and then I find that, well, it's not quite correct, we may have to give some variances and whatnot, so. Water capacity is available, this plant will be a great new customer for the city's water, this will be true regardless of the location. The sewer capacity is available, that also would be true at other locations. It's close to the Airport to ship future project products. In talking with Jared Hanson over at his packing plant in Hudson, the USDA side of it, according to him, the only thing that allows you to do is to ship your product out of state, and he's, he's not USDA certified, but he says the certification and whatnot is the same, but having the USDA certification does allow you to ship out of state, is the only difference, the quality and whatnot is the same. We've got strong local support, and as I indicated, I'm very strongly supportive of the project, support from C. W. C. and their ag program. If we were in Denver or someplace like that, that might be a consideration. If you have students that are zipping up to the Airport to take an ag class, it takes five minutes to get across to Riverdun, any, any place around here, so distance is not really the problem. I talked to my banker, trying to get solvent again, and I would ask him how he felt about it, and he said, well, I would have preferred that we went with local banks to try to get some of the funding, to get some of that business here locally, rather than look at the one-point-four-million dollars with the state grant, so that's another consideration. I guess in closing, I would just say that the city owns a lot of land on the east side of Riverdun, near the sewer treatment plant in the Balefield area, that would be a much better fit. That would be a much better fit for such an operation with an unknown future. This is a business and economic development that is very much needed in the Riverton area, and I am in support of it, but I am opposed to it at the planned Airport Road location for the above reasons. So that's, and one other thing, while I'm standing here and thinking about it, on the 422 property now, is that going to be through Realtor so that another individual would be able to bid on that property? Or is this a done deal, closed deal with Ms. Henry?
It's, it's, well, it's my understanding that we've, that someone has made an offer, okay? It's up to us to decide whether or not we'll accept the offer.
Okay. Has the appraisal on the property been made?
There's no formal appraisal.
So if anyone else wanted to bid on that property or have an opportunity to purchase it, for whatever reason?
And you could put it up for auction.
Who could?
The city.
I understand that, but are you?
No, we haven't.
I'd just like to see that opened up if we could, rather than just a closed in-house operation, is the way it appears. So.
Okay.
Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron.
Counsel. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, we're here representing the Fremont County Association of Governments saying we'd like to recognize Mayor Baker for all the work he's put in and for all the good things he's done for FCAAG over the last four years and previous to that with affiliated organizations. Lars, I'd like to thank you because you always knew, you had always researched the items and had insight from various sources, the statutes, the regulations and the things like that, and always came prepared to FCAAG. And I appreciate that you were there when I didn't know anything. I don't know much more now, but.
Oh, that's okay, Mayor.
But I appreciate you were always there to help me, and anytime the town needed help over in Hudson, you were willing to help us out.
Sure.
So we appreciate your years of service.
Well, you guys had a flood and we didn't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, I just wanted to also thank you for everything you've done for FCAAG. My name's Gary Micho. I'm the administrator of the Fremont County Association of Governments. And I do think that there's something that gets lost here that people don't understand. And, you know, you've given over sixty years of public service to our state. And yeah, people know that you've been the mayor and on council, and they know that you were the weed and pest guy for the county. But a lot of people don't know that you were also sheriff's deputy and a police officer early on in your career, which I think is pretty darn cool. And so really just want to thank you, and we put together a little plaque for you from FCAAG here. And it says, in recognition of your unselfish service to the public and citizens of Fremont County, Lars Baker, Mayor of Riverton. And then there's a quote on the bottom that's from William Shakespeare's Merchant of Venice, and it says, how far that little candle throws his beams. And I think you'll have impacts on this community for many years to come and this county, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Gary. Appreciate that. Do you want me to come down there and shake your hand?
You can. Forget to boss you, you know what?
Wow, okay. Anything else for comments from the floor?
All right. You're on that one. He was talking about five thousand gallons per day.
Yes.
That's, as far as I can figure, that's point oh oh two parts per gallon coming to the, into the plant. And so for our plant to handle point oh oh two, it won't be a problem.
Well, and I'm not exactly certain of this, but it sounded to me like when we talked to Mr. Sheets the other night, that none of that is going to go down the sewer, except what they have to wash down the floor. And so it sounded to me like he was going to collect all of that and take it to the landfill.
That was all going to the landfill.
Yeah.
And that's correct, Your Honor.
Yeah. So it doesn't look like we're going to have.
I've been advised that the landfill won't accept liquid waste. I don't know if that's accurate.
I don't know how they're going to take care of it.
I don't know.
You know, Mike?
Okay, the blood will be captured separately, and there are processors who take that and use it for other products.
I know Jared over in Hudson puts his down the sewer system, so I don't know.
That will not be the case in this plan.
Consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, December fourth, two thousand eighteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, December fourth, two thousand eighteen, executive session. Approval of the minutes, December eleventh, two thousand eighteen, special council meeting slash work session. Approval of the minutes, December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Are there items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the finance committee for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighty-five cents. Manual checks in the amount of seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Payroll liabilities for December seventh, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, for a total of eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or amendments? Mike?
Your Honor, abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Wex line items on the finance committee report.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Consent agenda's been approved. The next item is ordinance number eighteen dash zero one five, third and final reading, Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point oh four, billing procedure for public services. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number eighteen dash zero one five by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one five on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title thirteen, Public Services, to revise Chapter thirteen point oh four, billing procedure for public services. Sections thirteen point oh four point oh four zero, payment arrangements. Thirteen point oh four point oh six zero, utility deposit. Thirteen point oh four point oh seven zero, service transfer. Thirteen point oh four point oh eight zero, utility bills sent to renters. And thirteen point oh four point one one zero, base charges for services and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash zero one five on third and final reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance eighteen dash zero one five on third and final reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. It's like ready to vote. City clerk, please conduct a roll call vote.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote yes, and that passes. The next item tonight is ordinance number eighteen dash zero one seven, third and final reading. Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter thirteen point oh eight, Water Service System. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number eighteen dash zero one seven by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one seven on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title thirteen, Public Services, to revise Chapter thirteen point oh eight, Water Service System. Sections thirteen point oh eight point oh one zero, definitions. Thirteen point oh eight point oh three zero, promulgation of rules and regulations by city administrator. Thirteen point oh eight point oh six zero, trespass or interference with utility property. Thirteen point oh eight point oh nine zero, exposure of pipes to frost. Thirteen point oh eight point one seven zero, fees, number and types required. Thirteen point oh eight point one eight zero, fees when payment required. Thirteen point oh eight point two four zero, materials placement. Thirteen point oh eight point two nine zero, approval of replacement services. Thirteen point oh eight point three zero zero, extension to more than one property. Thirteen point oh eight point three two zero, purchase, installation, et cetera, by city. Thirteen point oh eight point three three zero, property of city. Thirteen point oh eight point three four zero, location. Thirteen point oh eight point three five zero, repairs. Thirteen point oh eight point three seven zero, monthly reading. Thirteen point oh eight point three eight zero, right of entry to read, inspect, test, et cetera, failure to allow entry. Thirteen point oh eight point three nine zero, defacing, injuring, bypassing, et cetera. Thirteen point oh eight point four one zero, computation when meter cannot be read. Thirteen point oh eight point four eight zero, voluntary discontinuation of water service. Thirteen point oh eight point five one zero, billing for service. Thirteen point oh eight point five two zero, shutting water off for utility purposes. Thirteen point oh eight point five three zero, size. Thirteen point oh eight point six zero zero, ownership and warranty. Thirteen point oh eight point six two zero, water cooling systems. Thirteen point oh eight point six five zero, use of supplemental water sources and to establish. Thirteen point oh eight point six seven zero, cross connections and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash zero one seven on third and final reading.
Zero one seven?
Yes.
So moved.
Yeah, eighteen dash zero one seven. Moved and seconded, discussion on this. Ready to vote. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call vote?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cody.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Aye.
Mayor John Baker.
I vote yes, and the motion passes. The next item is planning commission appointment. Bethany Baldes, Community Development Directors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Riverton Planning Commission has had three members resign in the last couple months, Mr. Mark Sainert, Mr. Sean Testman, and Mr. Dan Moline. On December sixth, two thousand eighteen, Ms. Bethany Baldes, who is with us tonight, submitted her interest letter in being appointed to the planning commission. This appointment will be for one four-year term. She will represent the ninth member of a nine-member commission. The commission will need, will still need two alternate members. At this time, staff is recommending that the mayor, with council concurrence, appoint Ms. Baldes to the planning commission.
Thank you. So the chair would entertain a motion to appoint Bethany Baldes to the planning commission?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes yes. Thank you, Bethany. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six, first reading, adoption of the two thousand and eighteen International Building Code. Community Development Directors' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The state of Wyoming adopted the two thousand and eighteen International Building Codes earlier this year, and the ICC releases new versions of the code every three years. So in two thousand and fifteen, we adopted, and now in two thousand and eighteen. The state then requires adoption by municipalities within six months of their adoption. Two thousand and eighteen building codes were provided to the Board of Appeals on September twenty-seventh of this year for their review and comment. On November fifteenth, the Board of Appeals met and recommended council adoption of the codes with the same exemptions and omissions as were adopted in two thousand and fifteen. The Board of Appeals also recommended requiring fire suppression systems in single-family residences with a living space greater than five thousand square feet, omission of fire protection of floors above crawl spaces, and carbon dioxide detectors in residential units if interior remodeling occurs. Ordinance eighteen dash zero one six amends Chapter fifteen, Building and Construction of the Riverton Municipal Code, to include the adoption of the two thousand and eighteen code as well as the additions recommended by the Board of Appeals. In concurrence with the recommendation from the Board of Appeals, staff recommends adoption of the ordinance eighteen dash zero one six on first reading.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one six on first reading. An ordinance amending Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction, revising Chapter fifteen point oh four, Building, Construction and Maintenance Codes. Section fifteen point oh four point oh one zero, Adoption, Applicability, Filing. Subsection Titles A one, A two, A two six, A three, A four, A five, A six, A seven, A eight, and A nine of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, we open the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes with other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I declare the public hearing to be closed. The chair would now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance eighteen dash zero one six on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we adopt ordinance eighteen dash zero one six on first reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the International Building Code? Kyle?
One question. On this eighteen oh one six, if someone were to purchase the motel above Bailey's gas station on West Main, would that fall under this guideline?
I don't know where we're at on that, or are they going to be grandfathered to an older set of rules? Or do they, because they'll come in with a new building permit, come in for the upgrade?
Your Honor, that's correct. They would fall under the two thousand and eighteen Building Code.
Okay.
With a remodel, if they.
If they were to do a, but, okay, so, and maybe it doesn't make any difference as far as, I guess what they're out of compliance on is fire alarm system, right?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay. And so that may not have even changed the requirements of that.
It would not.
Okay. All right.
They would still just comply.
Right. Still have to comply.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I think it wasn't something that was noted, but I think this bears noting that within the fire sprinkler system, that there is an exception. This is, this does not apply, this would only be really just new construction, wouldn't apply to additions or alterations to existing buildings that are not already provided with an automatic residential sprinkler system. So if you've got a building, something happens to it, or they want to do an addition, that kind of thing, then they're not having to add one in per the change we made here, right?
Your Honor, that's correct.
Okay, so only if they already had a residential sprinkler system would they have to extend that?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
But that's residential, that's not a commercial hotel like we're talking about here. But I just wanted to note that, for anybody that was paying attention to it, that this is not something, this would be really new construction would be what we'd be dealing
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Air Service Update, Public Work Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you don't mind, I'll prepare the center for an over.
I didn't need that screen.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm 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 sorry.
Looks like you're in business.
And all it took was switching the ends around. There must be a short in my computer. Your Honor, counsel, thank you for your patience, and I definitely want to thank Alex for his help on that. I did not give him a heads up that I would be doing an overhead presentation, and so-
Okay.
That is definitely something that I should have done. This is nothing to take action on today, but this is an opportunity for you as a council to get an update on how air service is going, and specifically, some of the issues that we're having this year. Now, in your weekly reports, I've been updating you on some of the unanticipated costs and overages related to fuel, and I'd like to get a little bit more into detail, especially with you together as a council, to talk about that, as we look at the remaining six months of our contract with Denver Air Connection. So let's talk about performance first. Performance is great. That's the simplest way to put it. For an update, I, I look at it from, let's do it, a contract year or a fiscal year. So in fiscal, from fiscal year seventeen to eighteen, we saw a seventy-five percent increase in employments. That's pretty great. Now, we knew where we were in fiscal year sixteen, we knew that reliability was down, and we needed to do something, and after doing something, we saw seventy-five percent increase. From eighteen to nineteen, we did thirty-two percent above that seventy-five percent from fiscal year seventeen. So seventeen to nineteen was thirty-two percent above the seventy-five. So basically, I'm projecting through the rest of this current contract year, and we're looking at, for the entire time that Denver Air Connection has been servicing Riverton, we're showing a one hundred and thirty-two percent increase in employments. We're regaining that market. The other thing I want to talk about is revenue generation. How are we doing generating revenues on each of the flights associated to Denver Air Connection? It was really easy to calculate for year-over-year change in seventeen to eighteen, that was a hundred and five percent increase in revenue generated by people flying out of Riverton, to and from Riverton, actually. So what does that look from a visual perspective? I love this graph because you can see the change year-over-year in employments, people leaving our airport. Blue line represents fiscal year seventeen, orange line is eighteen, and then the gray line is what we're currently doing this fiscal year. None of those lines overlap, so you're showing fiscal year growth in seventeen, but then marked improvement in eighteen, and then continued improvement thus far in fiscal year nineteen. How does that look continuous? That trend line is pretty good. Are we back to where we were in two thousand and ten? No, but we're making our way back to that because we're regaining confidence in the market, and we're making other improvements. So I mentioned, let's talk about revenue being generated. I love this graph as well. Year one, you're showing revenue generation at a slower pace. This is tickets sold. Year two, you see a significant increase, and then year three, you see another increase. Now, again, those lines aren't overlapping. So basically, from the start of year one, year two, and year three, we as a community, or as a project for Denver Air Connection, the project was starting significantly higher year-over-year in just generating revenue. What does that mean? Year-over-year revenue generation, you can kind of see how the green la, excuse me, the green line in the graph are actuals, so that's what we've generated thus far. The dotted line, I thought it would be interesting to put in, those are what we forecasted in revenue. Now, you can see, from the first year, we underperformed against the projection, but then near the end of the contract year, we were in line. Starting the second contract year, we performed significantly higher in generating revenue against our projection. Now, this year, if you followed the last July that's on the bottom right of the graph, we're not quite hitting the anticipated forecast for revenue, but we are still performing higher than we were year-over-year. So that's the good news. Air service is gaining, I think, traction, and maybe it's more important to say regaining traction in Riverton. But what are some of the impacts that we've been forced to address? Now, again, you're, you're already aware of many of these. The biggest is fuel. And maybe to, to fully explain the impact of fuel, let's talk about our contract with Denver Air Connection and the minimum revenue guarantee. We hear around the term revenue guarantee quite frequently, but I think it's important to remind ourselves exactly what MRG really means. It's a simple calculation. Basically, we receive a proposal from an air service provider, and they give us the total cost to provide service in our community. We then work with a consultant to say, okay, here is the cost, how much can we generate organically in the community of revenue to offset that cost? That's the tickets sold. So that graph I was showing you of revenue generated, that's the organic revenue. Now, the difference between the proposed cost to provide service and the organic revenue naturally generated is the MRG. So if you subtract the total cost to do the route from the revenue you anticipate receiving, you get the MRG total. When we calculate the MRG, we also throw in a Model Four Fuel. That's built into what we proposed in the contract that you approved last year. But that's just an estimate. Maybe I'll just, I'll do this one first. Our contract provision, this is the language within our contract, and I'll show you here, we're billed or invoiced weekly, and actual fuel costs are part of that, that invoice. So even though when we build the model for the MRG, when we're paying our invoices weekly to Denver Air Connection, we're not paying against our Model Four Fuel, we're paying against the actuals for fuel. Why does that matter? Well, let's go through the, the narrative, and then I want to show you some graphs. Year-over-year impact, just through the first twenty-two weeks of the contract year. So in fiscal year seventeen through twenty-two weeks, the actual fuel costs were five hundred and four, almost five hundred and five thousand dollars. Skip to fiscal year eighteen, a little bit of an increase, but not much, for the first twenty-two weeks, five hundred and sixty-two thousand. Now, look at the current fiscal year that we're dealing with, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in actual fuel costs. So that's a sixty-five percent increase over last fiscal year, and what it represents is six hundred, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars spent more on fuel than we did last year. That is something that we cannot control. The cost per barrel is the cost per barrel, and that trickles down to those who consume the fuel. So let's look at that from a graph perspective, just to visualize that. Again, the blue line is year one, orange line is year two, and year three is the gray line. And I think it's important to know, when we build our MRG models, we have to do it at about November, December, and January. Why? Because we want to get the model in place so we can put tickets on the market before you actually start the, the contract year. You want to list tickets in April for people to fly in July. So we do this work really early on into the season, and I know many of you know this because you approve those contracts. But if you look at the timeframe, when we were building our models for, from year one to year two, and year two to year three, we're doing it right about here, okay? If we were to do a trend line for those first six months of year two, it would have been hard to predict that. In fact, I don't think there would have been a way. So you see from year one and two, we started out, out at about the same fuel cost, year three was a significant increase. And I want to note, cost per gallon, I, I pulled a few invoices just out of curiosity. You can kind of see the cost per gallon. November of last year was two thirty-eight. By December, it was two fifty, in February, two seventy-six, and by the, by July, it was three dollars, and then we've gone down a little bit. The most recent invoice was two eighty-eight. When we looked at air service providers last year, you remember, we solicited interest from different providers, we received two, SkyWest and Denver Air Connection. Now, it's interesting that both SkyWest and Denver Air Connection listed fuel about the same. SkyWest did their fuel prediction at two fifty a gallon, Denver Air Connection did it at two thirty a gallon. Both entities could not predict what was going on this current year. When we show the continual fuel cost increase, the blue lines represent the year separation. But again, you see the, the large spike that really hit us, and continued to hit us at the start of the fiscal year or contract year. Now, it's interesting, two weeks ago, we were seeing a decrease in fuel costs, but the last invoice that we received, our costs raised again. So we're, we're watching that, and we're watching it closely, and we have been for the last four months. So that's the problem. Performance is great, air service is great, cost of fuel is giving us a hard time. So what do we do to solve the problem? There have been a few things that we've been working on over the last six months to address that sharp increase in fuel. First of which, as you remember from the weekly reports, we renegotiated with the FBO in Riverton and in Sheridan to reduce their fees that they charge us when we fuel Key Lime flights, or Denver Air Connection flights. I must give credit to Jim and Wanda for working with us, and more particularly, with Key Lime Air and Denver Air Connection, to reduce their fees to keep air service in Riverton. That was something that I appreciated from them, and I think they worked really hard on. The next is, we got to reduce operational costs. If we cannot catch up to the cost of fuel, we have to find ways to reduce operational costs for the project altogether. And as you know, one way to do that is to eliminate that afternoon direct flight. We really enjoyed the fact that we could break out from Sheridan and have a direct flight in the afternoon, but to keep this project going, as you know, we've decided to eliminate that direct flight and go back to a tagged flight with Sheridan, very similar to what we had last year. In doing so, we're going to save two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, just by eliminating that, and a lot of that's in fuel, okay? The other way to address this problem is increasing revenue. Obviously, interline agreement's going to be a huge benefit for us. We don't know exactly when next quarter, when that's going to be in place, but we think that that will increase our funnel in the market and increase revenue generated on the, on the flight. The other thing that FAST looks at every single week are ticket prices. Are we charging an appropriate amount to the consumer to maximize the revenue on each flight? As soon as that plane door closes, the communities pay the difference in the MRG versus how much it costs to fly that direct leg of the flight versus how much revenue was generated. So we've looked at baggage fees, we're making ourselves more competitive with the market in baggage fees, and then we are optimizing our tickets. The other thing, this was kind of mentioned a few months ago, but we provided a performance incentive to Forecast Inc. Hey, we've got a problem with addressing fuel, and we're incentivizing Forecast Inc. to generate as much revenue as possible for this route. The last way to solve the problem is to secure more funding, and this is something that we want to make sure that you're aware of. To get out of the hole for fuel, we want to request a grant increase with the state of Wyoming. Now, you remember, we receive funds from the Air Service Enhancement Program, ASAP Program, and that provides sixty percent of the, against the cost of the MRG. The communities provide forty. We plan on going to the state in January to request an increase to our current grant to right-size the grant against fuel. Now, to do that, we also have to secure local matching funds. Right now, Sheridan and Riverton are working on quantifying the, the right amount for that increase. To do that, we've been looking at projections of fuel moving forward, we've been averaging out what we've been spending thus far, and we've been applying it against every block hour that's flown in Riverton and Sheridan. So we anticipate coming back to the city council and to our other community partners in January to see if there is an ability to drum up local matching funds to match our increased grant requests to the state of Wyoming. Now, what happens if we don't get those extra funds? There's really two options. One, Denver Air Connection says, hey, we're fine losing a lot of money on this route, we're going to keep doing it. Two, they say, no, we're not okay losing money on this route. Therefore, if you cannot pay the additional increase for the fuel, for the MRG, then we stop flying. There's an ability to pay clause in our contract, this is a good thing. We're not held down to, to obligations that we cannot afford. You can see in our contract, basically, if the communities cannot generate enough funds to cover the minimum revenue guarantee and this cost of fuel, then we notify Denver Air Connection and we cease service. Obviously, this is probably the last option anybody wants to explore, and that's why we were working so hard to address this overage in fuel. So as we go forward to the state of Wyoming and request an increase in ASAP funds, we're going to be going to our community partners and saying, hey, air service is valuable. I think we all believe air service is valuable. It is an economic driver for Fremont County. So let's help address and solve the problem that's facing us right now with the overage of fuel. That's a quick run-through. So let's ask questions. And yes, that's my new baby daughter, Olivia, so I'm happy to answer any questions at this time regarding air service performance update, and more specifically, with some of these unanticipated and uncontrolled costs related to fuel.
Any questions? Kyle?
Do you have a figure on that, that difference that we're looking for?
We're getting closer. Tomorrow, I'm going to be on the phone with Y dot Aeronautics, Renee Obermiller, who's the county administrator for Sheridan County, and I have been working together. And to throw an estimate against what we would be looking for from each different community, it could be anywhere from forty thousand to fifty-five thousand. We don't know that yet, we want to make sure we're right when we make the request.
Is that our total per month that we're behind right now, or?
No, that's, that would be annualized, so that's the total to get us through the end of the, the contract year.
So we're at week twenty-two, we're going week fifty-two, and so between that period of time, we're thinking we're behind about fifty-five thousand?
That's directly broken out potentially to us as a community stakeholder, so Riverton specific.
So there's, so it's really a hundred and ten between us and Sheridan?
I really don't want to make-
Okay, never-
-rain cloud grow a little-
Let me, let me ask another question. What's our percentage, what's our thinking on when we get booking all the way- What's our thinking on when we get booking all the way through, whenever that comes through? Will we see increases like we have in the past? Will there be a 20% bump? Are you thinking 15% or what historically has it been?
That's the one thing that we're trying to hone down. It's hard to anticipate what revenue will do once the interline agreement comes into place. The funnel will increase because we'll get more visibility for out-of-market flyers. So for example, my sister-in-law flew in from Chicago a week ago, and it would have been easier for her to see that on a United portal to come in. So we're going to gain travelers like my sister-in-law, who would not otherwise know about Denver Air Connection. We don't know what that is yet. We're projecting conservatively. One of our consultants says we may see a decrease in revenue, but we think we're going to see an increase in revenue over the next six months of the contract year. I know I'm not giving you a firm answer, but that's because we're still honing down our model.
Is that like an ongoing investigation?
I know we're joking about it, but it really is. We have changed our model, I'd say, four times in the last two weeks. And just to give you an idea of what we're looking at, we're breaking everything out week by week. What's in black is what we've flown thus far. What's in blue is what we're projecting until we eliminate that direct flight. And then what's in red is what we're trying to model for the remaining contract year. Now, it's interesting, to do that, we look at the cost per flight, the cost per seat, fare revenue, load factors. We put in fuel, we're putting in fuel at 290 in this model. I think that's about right to make up from what we've seen at the first of the year to what we'll see at the end of the year. So I know I'm not giving you a firm answer, and that's because we're still honing it down. What we really wanted to do is get in front of you to let you know in about a month, we'll be coming to you with that firm number, so that everybody feels comfortable that we're not over-asking or under-asking.
Kyle?
One more question, then. It's your turn. So when we started out, we were burning fuel at 240 a gallon? And now we're burning it at, it has been as high as 3, 3-plus, and now we're back at And yet, there was, a week ago, was it, 20 cents a gallon or 30 cents a gallon drop in diesel? And I realize that we're not burning diesel, but that's all I can tell you.
Your honor, I can answer that really directly.
Okay.
When we started our project with Denver Air Connection, our cost per gallon for fuel was $2.11. What we paid last week, again, was 288. We have paid as high as that $3 range that I showed you in that slide. So we're just seeing that fluctuation dependent on the cost per gallon. Now, the good thing that has occurred, like I said, we can't control the cost per gallon, but we can control what our suppliers will charge us for their fees. That is a variable that can be controlled, and both Sheridan and Riverton FBOs have reduced the amount that they charge per gallon when they fuel the airline.
So what you're really saying is, is we're going to need some money, so find some.
I think that's the long and short. I mean, to solve the problem, we've done everything we can from a revenue generation standpoint, from an operational expenditure standpoint, and now we need to look at more funds to cover the gap that has been created by fuel.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, I guess, a couple of things, and Kyle, I think you've done a good job of explaining the situation. What we need to remember is, I think back when we started with Denver Air Connections, and crude oil is probably the easiest thing to sort of look to see what the market's doing. And I think, if I remember right, crude oil was probably in the 30s, maybe even the mid 20s at that time. And here, in the last six months or a year, crude oil has gotten up to $75. And the good news is, crude's back in the 50-55 range. So I think you're seeing that curve come back down. And of course, that's a double-edged sword for the economy of Wyoming, because higher crude oil prices means more economic activity and drilling and all of that kind of stuff. And so that's good for Wyoming, but it's bad for us as a city, because we've got to pay for fuel, and us as consumers have to pay for fuel. And so that's, but that, I think, the lower crude oil price right now probably is a good indicator that that, hopefully that Jet A price will go back down a little bit. And then the other comment I have is, we have to remember that this year, our minimum revenue guarantee was in the 400-and-something thousand dollar range. And the previous year, it was in the 800-and-something thousand dollar range. And so we are still way better than we were the first year that we did this. And so I think, you know, as dire as maybe some of your predictions
Even with the lower, and now higher.
Right. I would assume that even with this additional money we think we're going to spend, we're still way lower than we were a year ago's contract. And so, you know, we need to try to look at the positive side of this, and I think, and I can't imagine that when we get the interchange with United, between Denver Air Connections, and people other than in Riverton, Wyoming, or Sheridan, Wyoming, can know that they can, you know, that they can get on Expedia or Travelocity or any of those and actually find Riverton Airport on there, that we aren't going to see an increase in revenue. I can't imagine it's going to go down, so I don't know who predicted that. Now, whether we make as much per seat or per flight, that might go down, but, you know, I can't imagine we aren't going to see a great increase from that happening. And so I still am pretty excited about the overall process. And the number you didn't tell us was, do we have an idea of what's our percentage of capacity that we're running at? So I mean, are we at 75% or 80% or of the flights, of the seats available? Are we filling the airplane, I guess is my question?
Yeah, I can, let me pull up what we've just done. So this is the week of, the 18th of November to the 24th. And our load factor, and again, this is sharing a plane, 47% for Sheridan, 36% for Riverton, so you add those together, we're running 84% load factors. So the plane is getting full, and that's a positive thing. People are using it, and we're seeing, again, that growth. And I appreciate the fact that you brought up the fact that, from a revenue guarantee perspective, we saw a 47% decrease from last year. Even if we increase the contribution from the city of Riverton and our other community partners, it's still going to be overall less than what we paid in year one and what we paid in year two. So that sliding scale is getting better each and every year.
I think one of the, one of the big challenges that we have right now is knowing what percentage of that ticket price from Riverton to Florida, or wherever your destination is, what part of that gets credited to the Riverton-Denver leg? And so we're still kind of up in the air on how that goes. And so you see the, it's, in other words, if you had a, if a person just bought a ticket from Riverton to Denver, we'd know exactly what the price was. Or Denver to Riverton, we'd know what the price is. But it depends on the destination and what, and how the airline splits that with us on this leg, to know what the, what the revenue's going to be. So it's kind of unknown until that actually, until we have experience. And that, by the way, is exactly the same challenge that we have with the state capacity purchase agreement. At the present time, we have absolutely no idea what the proposal's going to be from, from an airline to provide air service to Wyoming and what they figure is going to be the fair share. So, and we've got exactly the same kind of deal where they're going to, you know, our model, what we've been doing with Denver Air Connection is so similar to what we're going to do on the capacity purchase agreement that, that I don't, I don't think it makes any difference at all. And so we, we're, we, Sheridan and Riverton are really familiar with this process. And ultimately, though, they're going to come to us and say, what are we paying right now, $2,200 an hour for the plane?
Riverdale.
Okay. And they're just, so whoever's going to be the successful bidder on that's going to say, we're going to provide the plane at this much an hour. And, and this is what you guys can count for revenue. Baggage, any freight that we carry, mail, you know, so on, so on. Passengers, ticket prices. They'll give us an idea of what we can actually count toward that, but, but it's, my understanding is that if you took a, if you flew from Riverton to Tokyo, it's a pretty long flight. And so the, the share of that flight from Riverton to Denver is a very small percentage of the total distance of the flight. And so if it's actually prorated based on the percentage of the miles flown, then Riverton's going to get five bucks for that ticket instead of 109. So that's why some people are looking at that and thinking that our revenues might actually go down, unless we see a substantial increase in passengers. So this is, and that's the challenge that we've, we're faced with, with, you know, I've been, I've attended all of these, these Air Service Improvement Council meetings for the state, and, and those are the, those are the questions that we ask every, every time we meet, and those are the questions that never get answered. And so what we will not, we will not know until March what that looks like. And so then we're faced with this other element that, that we need to, more than likely, there will not be an airline ready to take over on July 1. And so that means that we'll have to contract with Denver Air Connections on a monthly basis to provide that same service until we should change over. Or we might luck out, and it might be Denver Air Connections gets the contract, who knows? This certainly was written, written to include them. It's just that the question will be whether or not they can ramp up service enough to provide service to Rock Springs and Gillette.
Double their production overnight.
Oh, they'd triple, they'd have to triple, they'd have to triple seats overnight in order to make that work. And, and so when we've, when we've just contemplated changing a, where the plane parks, a gate at DIA, it's taken months to work that out. You know, if you, if you spend any time down there and look out the window, there's a plane landing about every 40 seconds. They have to have someplace to go. So there's a gate, you've got to have a gate open for that aircraft. And for that matter, they're probably, they're slotting those aircraft in, you know, 100 miles from Denver. And so those guys are getting lined up on final 100 miles out and have to keep up the pace, and they've got to, their wheels have to touch, you know, touch the runway at just that right moment, and then they, just enough time for the plane ahead of them to turn off before they land. And, and so it's pretty busy down there sometimes. So there's a real challenge to making all that fit. Well, okay, so now we've got to have some carrier, some way to bridge. So the state did put some additional money into ASAP to cover the bridge, but it's really tough, and so, but we won't know who got the deal until probably the first of April, if anybody got the deal, you know?
So do they have a bid document ready?
There's, oh, they do. They have a, there's a request for proposals out, and actually, they have to all be back in by the 20th of December.
Okay, so we're close then.
And, and I heard one person say eight, and I heard another person said five, were the number of companies that had, that had requested the RFP. Now, that doesn't mean we'll get hurt from any of them. So this is a, kind of a time of uncertainty for us. But if you're going to sell a ticket, you can't, you can't wait. We're going to have to
The night before.
Yeah. We're going to have to have the, we're going to have to show that the seats are available, you know, at least 90 days out, you know? And, and we had somebody here the other day that was already trying to, what, book something in July?
Yep.
You've got a great deal on hotel rooms if you do it a year in advance.
I don't know. Okay, so that's a, that's quite a challenge. Okay, any other questions for Kyle? Thank you. Okay, so our, our, our gavel exchange is going to be on January the 2nd, right?
Right.
And Lance can't be there, and so we need to shake hands with Lance tonight.
Want me to come down?
Oh, well, we'll just do it right here. We'll do it right here.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So here is, here is, here is your pocket watch, okay? It says right on the back, Lance Godey, Councilmember, 425217 to 1219, City of Riverton, Wyoming.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I hope you can enjoy that.
Absolutely.
All right?
Thank you.
And thank you for your service on the city council.
We have council committee reports and council member roundtable. Lance, have you got anything for us tonight?
Yes, your honor. I, we had our first solutions committee meeting last week after the previous council's actions regarding the habitually intoxicated. So I know we're kind of regrouping, taking an opportunity to kind of relook at new directions, new opportunities in a variety of areas. We just kind of really had an opportunity at that meeting to, I don't know, I don't say lick our wounds or whatever, but just kind of re-group, and I think we're going to hopefully come forward with some new, some new stuff in the not-too-distant future to keep at the issues of public intoxication, because we're not giving up. So it's still a problem, so we still need a solutions committee, for sure. The only other thing I have tonight, I did want to thank everybody, since I have the, I have the mic, to thank everybody on council, thank everybody on staff for the last 19 months. It has absolutely been everything I would have hoped it would be. And I certainly would love to continue, but I'm sure my, the new councilman, councilwoman for this ward is, is going to do a fantastic job, and I look forward to seeing her work and supporting her work. So I really, I don't have anything else, I guess, to say. I was going to write something down, and I thought, you know, I just need to speak from the heart. So I thank everybody for the opportunity, and I guess I would only say is, you're not going to see the last of me as far as service to this community. It is where I live, and I'm going to continue to find ways that I can contribute. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance. Tim, have you got anything?
Yes, your honor. And I, and I, oh, there's Ms. Harris. I guess we've got an upcoming meeting on the senior endowment board. I had told Ms. Harris I wasn't going to be there, but as things happen, I will be there. So we have that meeting upcoming. As we had discussed at a prior meeting with changing the way that investments are handled with the endowment, it sounds like we're going to be able to start getting the CDs funded on Thursday, so that's some good news. Hopefully, we can start seeing some increased amounts from that. Interestingly enough, the delay actually has worked to our favor in the sense that we're going to have a better rate on return, so that's, that's good, a rate, return on the investment. So anyway, that's, that's really all I have to report for that, and I just wanted to express my thanks to Mr. Godey. It's been good to have you here, and definitely appreciate your hard work, and we'll miss you. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, again, I did get to attend the airport board meeting, and Kyle had presented a lot of this information that he presented tonight. And again, I just, I'm impressed, and it's, it's amazing what we have been able to do as a community along, you know, with the FAST Committee and working with Sheridan and all the people that have been involved. And, and we've really turned the airport around, and those numbers are increasing. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, what happens when we get the interline agreements and some of that stuff in place, and to see those numbers. You know, I think it's very easily possible that next year we will meet our 10,000 employment number if we see the kind of increases that we've seen over the last year or two. And, and so I think that's really exciting. It's a, it's a great, um, thing to see, you know, how much difference we can make and not just leave it our fate to somebody else from somewhere else deciding what's going to happen in, in Riverton, Wyoming. So, um, I think that's really impressive. So I thank everybody that's participated and spent a lot of hard work, and the hard work's not over, but, um, I think we've, we've really turned a corner on, uh, improving our airport. And then this last week, I had the opportunity to meet, um, Tony and I and, uh, Mayor Leck Gard met with the folks from VOA and some folks from the, uh, casino and, and the tribal entities regarding the issues, uh, with, you know, substance abuse and vagrancy and all the kind of things that we have along that line, and talked about the different avenues that we have for trying to improve treatment and solutions to, to that problem. And again, nobody has the perfect answer for that. It's, you know, extremely concerning to me that we have this issue, and it, it comes down to, you know, not enough capability to give treatment to those that need it. And I'm not saying treatment is going to solve the problem either, but it's sure not going to hurt, it's going to help. And so I think we all need to try to figure out ways to try to help get some more treatment funded. Um, it sounds like talking to them and other experts around that, you know, the capacity for the treatment is there, it's just the funding, of course, from the state's been cut back, the federal government's been cut back. And so I think a lot of this is a symptom of, you know, less services being performed, and, and so that's not helping our situation. And again, with, with my work on the hospital board, the other thing that's sort of snowballing right around this same problem is, is that the federal government in its ultimate wisdom has changed some of the rules regarding, uh, uh, people that are in inpatient facilities, being taken care of for, uh, you know, mental illness and some of those kind of things. Uh, they've changed the rules to where the capacity of those organizations are cut down because of the rule changes. So, for example, the hospital over in Lander has a psych ward that has 13 beds. With the changes in the rules, they can only, they only have the capacity to have two people in those beds. Okay? And that's purely because the government changed the rules of the game. Okay? And of course, so on, on one side, the government's cutting the amount of funding they give per day, per whatever bed, and then they're also cutting the ability for them to have any capacity, which makes it, and, and the same thing's happening at the state hospital, at WBI in Casper, at the other facilities. And so we've got all these people that were in these, uh, mental health institutions that are not being able to be served, which means they are left on the streets to be taken care of by our fine police department and other police departments around the state, because, you know, so it, it's a real issue. And I think, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we need to make sure we're banging our drum so that the people at federal government level and the state government level know that this is a problem. And it, and it's just extrapolating, you know, it's, it's expanding that problem, not keeping it under control. And so it's a little concerning. I don't have the answer, but it's, it's something we all have to be aware of and make sure we're talking to our senators and representatives and all of that. And, you know, it's, it's easy to cut funding, but sometimes they don't understand the consequences of their funding. And that shifts a lot of this back to the city because we're the ones that, where people live, so. And I guess I want to thank Lance, I think you've done an amazing job. You got sort of dropped into this in the middle of a, of a shift, and, uh, I think you picked up and you did a fabulous job, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what you are going to do in the future. You'll do a good job at whatever you do. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle?
Man, that's good. Um, just to continue on with what Mike said, legislators, you can meet your legislators on December 27th at the Comfort Inn. And so, uh, they are, uh, going to be there to listen to our pleas. Uh, second thing I have is, uh, Chamber of Commerce, like the Bull Weevil, is still looking for a new home. And, uh, I, uh, I have a document in my possession of the last time we looked for a new home for the Chamber of Commerce, we entered into a lawsuit in 1985 where we had a perpetual injunction put on the city park that would not allow for any type of sale, lease, or gimme to Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I don't know what the wisdom is in 1985. I just got here, and I don't understand that for the reason is that the Chamber of Commerce is an unpaid side of the city of Riverton that keeps business coming in. And so we need to look at that and say, uh, city park is because Chamber of Commerce is there. So we need to review that. Uh, I've heard that from some people that we need to talk to the original owners of the property and see what their intent was, and if we can't utilize some of that ground better. I know horseshoes and tennis are not one of the fine primary activities there, but the Chamber of Commerce could improve that part of the park. Secondly, the solid waste is rolling in our money, and they approximately have $14 million to put any one of the future dumps to the grave. But you see, you've got to have perpetual care on those graves, so that's why the money is there, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Rebecca? Oh, Sean, are you still with us?
I might fall asleep.
Have you, have you got anything for us tonight?
Can I, he said.
Sean!
Sounded like he said.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, I would just like also to express my, uh, gratitude to Lance. I know he stepped into a, uh, big shoes to fill, uh, and I think he did an incredible job. Uh, it, it's very rare to meet somebody with the passion and the desire to serve the way that he came in. Um, so thank you, Lance, for your willingness to step in and to fulfill that role. Uh, and then also a reminder that the rec board will be receiving, uh, the grant applications. The Fremont County 25, um, rec board will be receiving the grant applications next month. Uh, I believe the date is the 14th, but I will confirm and put something out. Um, but you can find those applications on the District 25 Board, um, website, get them filled out, and then we will have the presentations done at the, um, district building over right off of Main Street. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. I was going to speak about, uh, Parks Committee and the first annual tree lighting that we had on December 8th. It was a huge success. Um, and I want to say thanks to the city staff, Kyle and Tony, and Chief Murphy for putting that together for us so quickly. Um, it was really neat to see everybody there and the officers that were there, um, and the fire department as well. They just, the way they interacted with the community was just amazing, and we're really thankful for that. Um, we're holding our next meeting on January 14th. We took a couple weeks off, you know, for the holidays. Everyone's schedules are pretty busy. Um, and at that meeting, we're going to meet with some people from the farmer's market to try to get the farmer's market moved to one of the city parks here next summer. Um, I've been meeting with Kathy Klein, like I spoke, um, of a few meetings ago in regards to building a dog park in Riverton. Um, well, she, we should be meeting again later on this week, um, and so I'll have some more to report on that the next council meeting. Um, rendezvous games, um, is still going on, uh, registration open today. Um, and that will be taking place in the city park on February 2nd, so make sure you get your businesses and organizations registered for that event. Um, it should be a pretty, pretty neat, pretty fun event that we can carry on, um, biannually for the community. Um, I've been speaking with, um, Casey Bailey. She's a motivator within the community, um, just a volunteer who's willing to, um, continue on with the Wild West Winter Carnival events, and she's, um, spearheading, um, to get those ice races back going again. Um, and we don't know the exact location yet, but she's been working very, very hard, and I've been assisting her where she needs me to, to get those events going again, um, for the community, to bring people in the community, and then just have things for those individuals to do in the winter months. Um, we are still going to be doing the ice carving on Main Street. That'll be the same day as the, uh, the rendezvous games, so February 2nd, so we'll get some advertising out for that soon.
Did you say that it'll be on Main Street?
Yep, on Main Street, the same as it always has been in the past. Um, we wanted to keep that going for people because that is a big thing for Riverton. And I've talked to a lot of people, and when they heard that it may not be happening, there's a lot of discontent and sadness. So we said, well, we'll, we'll do it then. We'll find someone to volunteer their time and make it happen. Um, so that's all I have as far as the, um, the committee reports, and I just wanted to tell Lance, thank you for all of your guidance and mentorship over the past few months, and then, um, and everything else that you've done for, for council and this community. And I know that it's not going to stop here, but I'll tell you what, I'm going to miss you. You're, you're a great partner in, in doing this, so you will be missed, but, well, we'll have plenty more things to, to work on together, so. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rebecca. Uh, city administrators report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, echoing the comments of everybody else, Councilman Godey, on behalf of staff, thank you very much for your service and for all the work you have done with us and all the support you have shown us. We appreciate it greatly, and we will look forward to continuing to work with you in different capacities. With regard to the rendezvous games that were recently mentioned, just a small piece of information is that it, uh, a separate fund was set, uh, for acceptance and use within, for those games due to the fact that council is supporting those. The reason for that is we wanted to, uh, check with our auditors. The items listed will be in Fund 52 for the purposes of segregation of the funds from other funding within the city, uh, and for allowance of carryover. The idea is the, to have those funds move from year to year. So if, hey, it, it starts making enough money to help support itself, then they can use those funds, or if they want to grow, they can use those funds. So we wanted to make sure that we were on top of that. I would thank, uh, Mia Harris for her diligent work on that because she did a lot of background checking, uh, for information to make sure that we were doing that appropriately. So thank you to her. So when you see a new fund, we're not just building them for no reason, there, there's a function here. Um, as a separate item, there is, uh, just a reminder, WHAM Conference is scheduled for February 20th through the 22nd in Cheyenne. The voting delegate forum will be to council in January for, so if anybody's interested, um, that's going to be coming forward. The last item that I have actually may require some, uh, some thought and possibly some action on your, on your, on your side. The, uh, staff has identified a grant opportunity that is due, uh, make sure I have this right, January 7th. Now, while we have a little bit of time, it, it is a federal grant, and it does not require a local match. The grant is through the U.S. Department of Justice, U.S. Justice Programs and Bureau of Justice Assistance. It is called the Justice Reinvestment Initiative. Uh, this is the FY 2018 competitive grant announcement. Uh, approximately $1.2 million possible per, uh, per applicant. The idea with what we're proposing is to, uh, develop a program and use an IT-based solution to essentially apply GIS functionality to crime mapping within our community in order to better, uh, in order to better identify particular areas that require assistance. For instance, if we can track these items in more real time, so incidents, types of incidents, when they occur, time-wise, day-wise, et cetera, with a lot, with a lot better data, the ability for us to appropriately apply our resources, i.e. our police department, increases. Therefore, it can actually be, uh, a significant increase in terms of how effective we can be. The good news about this particular program, it's $1.2 million for, uh, three years. It would pay for the, it would pay for the, uh, IT-based solution, so it would pay for our, uh, all the technology that we need, and also has the ability to support, uh, I believe we're proposing two officers. Now, these would be two additional officers, the, uh, to our ranks. We would, of course, take some of our existing people, uh, some that have those skills. We would apply them, and then we would hire during that time period. We are not predicting, once the grant runs out, the need to really do a lot of decrease due to natural turnover and attrition. Um, that would be the idea at the time, but we would have to keep an eye on that. However, it would increase city resources, um, through a federal grant program and allow us to do this. Now, as I said before, the city does not have any match within the proposed program. As such, there are a number of times that staff applies for grants without match. Um, we do that just because, um, there's, if we say no, or if we're allowed to do it, there's no, uh, burden upon the city, really. Federal grants are not really that way. Um, as such, we are, we are seeking a, uh, a motion and, a motion of support in the way of council directing staff to prepare a letter of support for the grant and authorize the mayor to sign it, of course. Um, we would provide additional information on the details of that at the next council meeting in, uh, at the next council meeting in January. However, in order to get these documents together, for instance, just the document application package is about that thick. So it's taking us a little bit of time. I would direct, I would call a little bit of attention to the fact that Captain Byerly is the one that found this grant and has already started working on it. Um, so he deserves a ton of credit because these types of grants that require no match at all, that can provide something that is so useful to us are very rare. Um, we could have probably waited till the next meeting, and we plan on talking about it at length. However, in an effort to move forward and get this going, we would ask for your support. Be happy to answer any questions you have on that. And I have no other items on my report.
Okay, council?
Is this the same purpose that Captain Byerly had thought of for the grant, or, I guess what was the?
Yes, Councilman. This, this, this is proposed as how Captain Byerly proposed, uh, proposed it to us.
Your Honor, I would move that the city council direct the staff to move forward on the federal grant for law enforcement.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Mayor, may we amend that to add a letter of support to be prepared and signed by the mayor?
As needed, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So this doesn't, I'm always suspicious.
Wonder why?
That, that if we create a position, that then there isn't some obligation to maintain that position and, and, uh, or we're, you know, under threat of, of having to pay the grant back.
Yes, Your Honor. Um, that type, that type of language is very common in police grants, especially, uh, you see men's RO grants a fair amount. To our knowledge, that is not required as part of this.
There's not?
No. So there's none. If we happen to run across it, because, let's be honest, it's a pretty big package, um, the, uh, we would obviously have to come back, come back and say, okay, here's where we're at. So if we run, ran into anything in the meantime that is different than what we've told you today, we would have to get back with you quickly.
Yeah, it's not that we don't need a couple more cops, okay? It's just, you, once the federal dollars go away, how do you fund it? That's the trick. Okay?
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Tim.
Is this, is this going to work with Spillman, or, I mean, how, how's that going to? I, I mean, that's the database that they use for all of their... I mean, that's the database that they use for all of their...
Your Honor, so no, it does not work with Spillman. However, it does work with UCR, which tracks our crime data. So it does work with, with that. Spillman's a completely separate thing. This is a crime mapping system, is the IT part, which would be really helpful. We're gonna reach out to the Sheriff's Department and BIA so they can be involved as well.
Is this gonna be part of kind of a, I mean, with that information, you could definitely do a little bit more of community-oriented policing, have a little bit of more proactive rather than reactive to issues in those areas? Is that kind of sort of the idea here?
Your Honor, that is exactly the idea.
Your Honor. A question, maybe, is, you mentioned the IT component. Is, is that fundable within the grant as far as staffing goes, in addition to the officer staffing, or would that kind of fall to our existing IT department?
Your Honor, I believe, and I'll, I will double-check on that. That's a great question that we haven't asked. The, but I believe from the cursory read on it, it's a little bit like the programs that we've presented to you previously. While there is an IT solution, that a lot of it is maintained within the department on an ongoing basis and, and therefore hosted, well, to some extent, probably, externally in terms of functionality. So we wouldn't plan on having the same maintenance requirements that one might think of in some of our other programs. So the upkeep on the system does not directly require the same effort on our side.
Okay.
But we will double-check on that just to make sure. It's a, it's a new item for me as well.
Right. Your Honor, can I say something real quick? So it is an internet-based mapping system, and so the city administrator's right, for what we would have to do is very minimal as far as maintenance.
Gotcha.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. So if you'll prepare that letter, I'll sign it.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Anything else?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Tony did bring up the WHAM conference coming up, and, and so we, you know, somebody from the, from WHAM, from our council, needs to be the voting delegate at WHAM. Okay? But we also, Holly Gibbon was on the WHAM Board of Directors. And so there's a vacancy on the Board of Directors out of Region Four, which is us and Natrona County. And we've already got Charlie Powell on there from Casper City Council. And so we need somebody from Riverton or Lander because the vacant seat is for a first-class city. So we'll need somebody out of this council to do that. So Charlie Powell's been calling me, wondering when we would try to make an appointment for that. And, and when we had a Region Four meeting several months ago, it was our decision at that time to wait until we had new councils seated. I think that WHAM, that board meeting's actually gonna be in February, and so sometime coming up then, we need to come up with that. That's, that's a vacancy that needs to get filled. So I talked to Dell McComey about it today. Of course, he's, he's, he's a lame duck, just like I am. And so Charlie Powell was hoping that we could get it filled before the end of the year, but Dell thinks, no, we'll wait until everybody's settled and, and Lander and Riverton can work it out, who's gonna do it. So, kind of since we had Holly Gibbon on there, then maybe it's Lander's turn or something. I don't know. However you wanna, however you wanna work that out. But that's something that's coming up in the next, in the next month that we'll need to sort out. And so do we have an executive session tonight? Okay. All right. So the chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation.
Your Honor, I move that we convene into executive session for the purpose of litigation. I'd also move that we, I have a personnel matter I'd like to discuss as well.
And a personnel matter.
Second.
Moving seconded. Okay, Tim and Kyle? Okay? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. We are convening to executive session at eight fifty.
How are we gonna get Councilman Peterson?
Councilman Peterson, can we call you back?
Yes, sir. I'll be standing by.
Okay. Yeah, so you can do that for us, Megan? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
We're gonna invite Tony and...
Eric.
Eric. Kristen.
Nobody left.
Well, somebody did, actually. There's Mia, she's still here. Holy cow! I am, and the chief, and you guys are still here? Okay.
We should talk about personnel every night.
All right. So I would, I would entertain a motion to reconvene into the regular session.
So moved.
Second. So, Tim, Mike, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are reconvened at nine fifty-one.
I move we adjourn.
It's been moved that we adjourn. Is there a second? I didn't hear that.
Second.
Mike? Okay. Been moved in a second that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adjourn. Thank you.